Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our service men and women throughout the world and also for all who have passed in our community.
Roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gunn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, minutes of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee meeting held May 30, 2017, September 26, 2017, and October 24, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B, check received in the amount of $200,000 from the University of Scranton, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Scranton.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting held December 13, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D, Controller's Report for month ending November 30, 2017.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3E, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting held November 15, 2017.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3F, minutes of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held November 15, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3G, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting held November 15, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3H, minutes of the Composite Pension Board meeting held November 15, 2017.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3I, agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board meeting held December 20, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3J, minutes of the Composite Pension Board Special Meeting held November 29, 2017.
Are there any comments? Received and filed.
3K, tax assessor's report for hearing date to be held January 10, 2018.
Any comments? Received and filed.
3L, check received in the amount of $1,000 from Covenant Presbyterian Church, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Scranton.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3M, single tax office financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2015.
Are there any comments? Received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I just have one. I just wanted to mention that on January 27th at Montage Mountain, they'll be holding the Polar Plunge for the Friends of Shannon McDonough. This group has donated to over 20 young individuals battling cancer right here in northeastern Pennsylvania. This will be the 5th Annual Polar Plunge from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, January 27th at Montage Mountain in Scranton. And this group is calling on caring businesses and individuals alike to support this community event. They're seeking gift cards, gift baskets, which will be displayed and raffled at the event, among a number of other things. There are prizes, a DJ, food, health-related vendors, and you can find out more at www.friendsofshannondonah.com. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Next Monday, January 15th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Council will not meet due to the holiday. City Hall will be closed this day. DPW is also off on the 15th. Refuge and recycling will be one day behind next week. The DPW director notified us that crews will be collecting Christmas trees, which are left on the curb until the end of the month. All trees will be recycled. City Council will have their next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, January 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First speaker tonight is Joan Hodewannitz.
Joan Hodewannitz, city resident and taxpayer. Now, you all know I'm a woman of infinite patience. But 284 days ago, on March 30th, 2016, council approved a contract with the Knoll Insurance Company for a three-year insurance of city property and vehicles. And at that time, we raised the issue that items on the proposed insurance list were outdated. For example, one of the properties to be insured was the Scranton Public Library, which the city has not owned since January 2010. And I requested to see the amended insurance list, and I was told I would be able to see it. So we've been waiting 284 days. Now, I realize that the administration can argue that this is a living document, so it's basically never going to be ready for release to the public. And I also realize that I could put in a right-to-know request, but it's so much more fun to stand up here and attempt to shame the administration. I want to see that revised list as it stands right now, and I think I have every right to. And I don't think the responsibility should be mine to put in a right-to-know request. I think they owe me the information. I pay my taxes. I want my money's worth. So I'm looking for that, and I'm going to ask for it, just like I did on the audits every week. Speaking of things that are overdue, the Arcadis Study. When that originally was approved, we were told it would probably be completed in the October, November timeframe of last year. If nothing else, I would like to know a timeline and when that's going to be completed and the information shared with the public. Because basically, I suspect that down the road, we're going to be looking at something like a rain fee, if not a rain tax. So I'd like to see that. And finally, I want to thank the Scranton Times for updating us on at least two of the pending lawsuits against the city. The Act 511 lawsuit and the garbage fee lawsuit. And of course, there are others, the sewer authority, the pensions, so on and so forth. But I would strongly recommend, as you enter into the year and you start implementing budget deals and everything else, that you keep in mind the impact that those lawsuits could have if they eventually go against the city. And if you're not discussing it with the administration right now, you ought to be thinking in terms of Plan B. Because, you know, we're already paying through the nose, probably going to get a jolt from the school district. So as that information comes down. Other than that, Mr. Donahue, welcome to the city council. The peanut gallery welcomes you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lawrence Sykes.
Hi, I'm Lawrence Sykes. Last week, I've been restructuring my mortgage. I'm on disability, and of course, the income is reduced. I got a notice from my mortgage company that there were liens on my home. I've paid every bill ever put to me, so I was very curious. They sent me photocopies of the liens. They were liens for non-payment of the garbage tax. I called multiple times, could not get an answer on the phone, so I came down to talk to the woman that's in charge of it. I told her that I had never, ever received a bill, notice of possible liens, not a single bit of correspondence. She goes to her computer, she pulls up, and she said, "Oh, we were sending everything to 415 Arthur Avenue," my previous address prior to owning the building at 210/212 Theodore. I said to her, "Well, with bi-annual payments and bills going out, you didn't consider, after you got all this mail back, to perhaps look at my tax records or even open a phone book to see where my correct address was?" And she told me she didn't have time for that. I reuse, recycle, and compost. I put less than a half of a kitchen garbage bag of garbage out every week. As I said, I've paid every bill I ever have. I had to come up with over $5,000 to pay liens, taxes, and the fees for garbage. I explained to her the situation, and there was no movement at all. I don't think it's fair to charge me the liens and fees because I was never notified. And I think there's due diligence would have brought me my bills in a timely fashion. It also occurred to me that I can't be the only person that's in this situation. This woman was hired by the city of Scranton to retrieve revenue on these fees. And it's apparent to me that she's not doing this. She's merely collect- or filing liens, collecting her fees, and not doing anything to bring the revenues that are missing from the city. And I would imagine there's quite a few people that are missing that. I wanted it to bring it to your attention because apparently, she doesn't know what her job is supposed to be. And I think that council should inquire about her activities down there and see, maybe we can recoup revenues that we were supposed to have years ago. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, the property in question is the one on Arthur or the one on Theodore?
On Theodore.
On Theodore?
210/212 Theodore.
And how many years was it?
I've been there about nine years, maybe nine and a half years now.
So that would be the nine garbage bills, so roughly $2,700 face value.
Yeah. I think they- don't they send them out twice a year?
Well, they send them once a year with extra, you know, two bills within one, you could pay them twice. But I just wanted to find out that you paid- they wanted over $5,000 with penalties and fees, and the face value was 2,700?
Exactly.
Okay.
And we discussed this on the phone. Councilman Evans and myself actually have a meeting on Friday regarding the garbage bills and a number of other issues. And this is definitely something that I plan on bringing up at that meeting with the treasurer and other members of the administration, and we'll be in touch.
I appreciate that. Because like I said, I can't imagine how much revenue has been sitting there because she doesn't have time to either pull up the tax record or even simply open a phone book. I mean, nine years' worth of returned mail? You'd think that somebody would want to do something about that.
I agree.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Albert Young.
Last month, early last month, I approached council, and I asked them if you had read the Riley Report, and if not, please digest it. Have you read it, any of you? I know Bill has. Okay. There are many inconsistencies in that report. So with that said, gentlemen, I ran across a quote the other day, which I feel is very appropriate here tonight, which simply states, "Don't confuse my personality with attitude. My personality is who I am, but my attitude depends on who you are." Seventeen months ago, council members declared our problem an emergency and supposedly found monies to repair our properties, the Young and Kennedy properties. At that time, the bid was out for $64,000 for a 60-foot repair. Since then, the repair area has gone to 80 feet, and the cost is- was increased to just shy of $96,000. And those bids were by a licensed DEP engineer that I hired, not the city. Now, if council had the authority to access emergency monies, why then are we dealing- still dealing with this problem? Why do we have a council if you can't act on your own actions? Now, with payments to Riley Engineer, I can only assume that the $65,000 that was paid to them was used from the emergency monies that was drawn out for our problem. And if that is the case, city has overstepped their bounds again. Early last month, I requested council to set up a meeting with the engineers, the city, and all the property owners that were affected by the Riley Engineering Report. Thank God, Bill Gunn set up the meeting, set a letter to the mayor and all of those people because nobody else has done it up to this point. So hence, the litigation, I tried a year ago to do this, and I was turned down, so hence the litigation started. Now, a request should be in place as soon as possible for an RFP to be in- to hire contractors to repair the two properties, namely ours and the Kennedys', to repair those properties. And that should be written and- a written report back to us by the 12th of February. It's a little bit late to be writing RFPs for anything other than contractors at this point. We are going to- we are not going to sign any type of easement other than the original emergency agreement stating the two properties unless the city agrees to use option one in the engineer's report. And that one is a straight-through program, using the original contract, the original culvert with a concrete foundation, not a tube. Remember, gentlemen, the city owns the culvert, the present culvert, not a diverted culvert. Now, a year and a half ago or better, I asked the council to please come out and visit to see the devastation. And to this point, Mr. Perry and you, Mr. Rogan, have yet to come out. I guess we're not in your sights. On another note, if I were to win the lottery tomorrow or whenever, I still would have to go back and ask city to- for permission, and then get permission from DEP to repair my own property that you own. I did watch the council's last meeting before the holidays, and I witnessed Mr. Wexler's statement, and I quote as close as possible, "The Youngs are getting help." Boy, that statement is totally false. He says he doesn't lie. Well, he certainly can stretch the truth from coast to coast. No work has yet been done. Thank you. And Bill, thank you for at least attempting to get the letter started to the proper areas to get a meeting with everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim McGrone.
Evening. Jim McGrone, taxpayer, resident 1721 Wyoming Avenue in Scranton, Abby's neighbor. I implore each of you gentlemen, as members of our legislative council, to hear me. I just need help in interpreting that culvert investigative report for the Meadow Brook Water Project prepared by Riley Associates that Abby just alluded to. There's information in there going back to 1898, a lot of technical terms. After the purchase of my 40-foot property near 40 years ago, long before realtors had to disclose problems with property, I did not- wasn't out of wear of this crick purchased anyway. Love Scranton, happy to have lived there. However, I was no longer in my property than a friendly neighbor tells me, "Oh, you're on the Love Canal." This was, by the way, 1979, when there was a real Love Canal up in New York somewhere. I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Well, you've got toxic water." I said, "I don't have any toxic water. What are you talking about?" He said, "You're a crick. The storm water comes through four cemeteries in Dunmore." I said, "So?" He said, "That's embalming fluid and badami materials. Ridiculous." I said, "Well, it is ridiculous." But it got me to thinking, so I better see a councilman. I went to see the neighbor, Jim Doherty, who informed me that the Army Corps of Engineers had a little bit of a solution to this flooding problem with the storm water, and that they could take a pipe directly from the Grandview Street area behind the state school, straight down into the Lackawanna, or go down Washington Avenue, connect down to some culvert on the Greenery Street, again back to the Lackawanna area. This would help alleviate, he said, some of the massive storm water building up because of developments up in the Dunmore area. Well, needless to say, some of the neighbors objected where those pipes would go, and the project never took off. Is that since then, there have been more cavins, flooding, rats, et cetera, going through that storm culvert. I don't believe there's toxic materials. I'm just telling you a story a neighbor's got me upset over. The culvert, as Abby said, has four solutions. The best one being the first one that he mentioned of it is the most expensive with concrete. However, it's the most effective, as the cost-effective one, which is only half the amount of money, will be costly or in the long run and inefficient for future potential taxpayers and the immediate people living there. Because it brings this plastic tube right- first of all, the storm water is within- from here to the council's wall there is that less than 20 feet. Well, if you put this plastic pipe, it'll be right next to my basement. You know, this is not good for human habitation. I already have the storm water there. Let's not bring it any closer. So I endorse what Abby just said, is stick with number one of the four proposals in that contract. My good neighbors, by the way, on both sides of me, already have lawyers, legal advice, and lawsuits, I believe. I asked, "Do I need-" I don't have one. I don't have a lawyer. I don't have legal- who do I go to? An environmental engineering law firm somewhere in the country and ask for help with this? It shouldn't be necessary. The city doesn't need another suit, obviously. But I do need, and my neighbors do need, help. And all we're asking is some interpretation of this report. And, you know, we just- we're living up there on a ridge with this culvert coming down to it. It should be diverted properly and encased properly for- for the safety and soundness of that neighborhood. I thank you for your time, gentlemen, and good evening.
Thank you.
And Mr. McGrone, if I could.
Oh, yes.
As Mr. Young was saying, I- we sent a- I asked for a letter to be sent out so that we could get all of the affected property owners together with the engineers to explain this report and answer, you know, some of the questions that you have. And I would agree with you and Mr. Young. I mean, I look at what's come on here over the last 17, 18 months. We're spending $350,000 to build a park downtown.
Yes.
$400,000 or whatever it was for salaries at Scranton tomorrow. Well, what about the people that live and have a hole in their backyard, or as you just said, the problems you have? So I'd rather go with the more expensive one to make sure that it's done the right way. So I'm hopeful that we can get this meeting as soon as possible to get all of these issues taken care of. And I thank you for coming up to speak.
And I thank you for those remarks, and I appreciate that. That's really actually all I am asking for. I don't want to sue anybody in the world, but is a- to let me as a neighbor, since this report was just dropped on my lap yesterday, since I don't have a suit, but I do have developing cracks in the foundation of my garage, both in the top and the bottom, as do my neighbors.
Right.
And they exist. So I do thank you for those remarks and taking up time this evening. I appreciate the work you councilmen do. I know you're not peneurs with your time, but I am grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny Srebro.
Lenny Srebro, Scranton resident. Mr. McGrone, welcome to the club of storm water trying to resolve problems. You'll be a lifetime member. No, you know what? I really don't have a lot to say. I actually came tonight instead of asking the same old questions, you know, trying to get answers. I'm hoping that somebody could tell me something. Now, I want to say, this gentleman here, when you mentioned the garbage, I just have a question that popped into my head. Well, I'm going to be out of my property because of the house that burned for six months, so am I liable to pay my garbage fee of six months if I'm not there producing garbage?
No, the city has a process in place for vacant properties, where you produce an electric bill to show that it was vacant, and then it would be waived. Again, it's not a perfect system, so it's something, you know, that we're working on trying to find a better way.
Where would I start at to?
The city treasurer's office.
Okay. All right. You know, somebody else said something, you know, as long as I've been coming to the council meetings, you know, I'm sorry, there's a couple of you guys that never said a word. Mr. Perry, thank you for coming out at one time and looking at the situation and taking the time to look at the flooding problem.
You're welcome. Did you ever get any kind of answers or satisfaction with that meeting? I think a couple- last month, you're here, and you said that there's going to be a meeting in about two weeks. I think that was developed with some people involved. How did that go for you? Did you get any kind of answers or resolution from that?
Now, when did I say there will be a meeting in two weeks? How long ago was that?
It was end of November, beginning of December-ish.
Okay, well, nothing ever happened. You know, that's why I'm saying, it's nice, you get some positive things, but then, nothing ever happens, you know? Mr. Gahan, you're the best so far, you know? This gentleman, when he was having surgery, took the time to call a couple of times and try to come up with something that, you know, I understand, we're going to have a meeting, you know, but that's what I'm- I have open ears to find out what's the latest.
January 18th at 10:00 AM in the mayor's office.
And what about, I thought there was a meeting on January 10th?
Nope. As far as I know, the mayor's secretary had contacted me. We were in touch back and forth, and she said, January 18th at 10:00 AM, the mayor, Mr. Pochus, and the city planner, Mr. King.
Okay. All right. So nobody can tell me anything until that meeting, right?
Yeah, that's what I was told, yeah.
Okay, you know, I'll take anything I can get, you know, and we'll see what happens after that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Ron Elman.
Ron Elman, resident of-
No, the city has a process in place for vacant properties where you produce an electric bill to show that it was vacant, and then it would be waived. Again, it's not a perfect system, so it's something, you know, that we're working on trying to find a better way.
Where would I start at to?
The city treasurer's office.
Okay. All right. You know, somebody else said something, you know, as long as I've been coming to the council meetings, you know, I'm sorry, there's a couple of you guys that never said a word. Mr. Perry, thank you for coming out at one time and looking at the situation and taking the time to look at the flooding problem.
You're welcome. Did you ever get any kind of answers or satisfaction with that meeting? I think a couple, last month you were here and you said that there's going to be a meeting in about two weeks. I think that was developed with some people involved. How did that go for you? Did you get any kind of answers or resolution from that?
Now, when did I say there will be a meeting in two weeks? How long ago was that?
It was end of November, beginning of December-ish.
Okay, well, nothing ever happened. You know, that's why I'm saying, it's nice, you get some positive things, but then nothing ever happens, you know. Mr. Gahan, you're the best so far, you know. This gentleman, when he was having surgery, took the time to call a couple of times and try to come up with something that, you know, I understand, we're going to have a meeting, you know, but that's what I'm, I have open ears to find out what's the latest.
January eighteenth at ten a.m. in the mayor's office.
And what about, I thought there was a meeting on January tenth?
Nope. As far as I know, the mayor's secretary had contacted me. We were in touch back and forth, and she said, January eighteenth at ten a.m., the mayor, Mr. Poshus, and the city planner, Mr. King.
Okay. All right. So nobody can tell me anything until that meeting, right?
Yeah, that's what I was told, yeah.
Okay, you know, I'll take anything I can get, you know, and we'll see what happens after that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Ronnie Elman, resident of Scranton. I'm overjoyed at seeing so many people here. Mr. D., I'm a dyslexic. Every time I see these gentlemen around you, my blood pressure goes to like three fifty, and I can't keep my thoughts sometimes, so bear with me. Soon as I leave, it goes back to a hundred and seven or something, you know. I know you won't like it, but I've always thought myself, if someone doesn't have enough interest to come to council meetings, they don't belong up there. But every one of these gentlemen didn't go to council meetings, and they're up there, so I suppose that's not a prerequisite. Like many people, these fine speakers that get up here week after week, I've been asked fifteen years, twenty years ago, why I never ran for council. The truth is, I never thought I'd live so long. That's honestly, I just, I would have ran fifteen years ago and see if I could contribute something positive to the city, but I'm still here. Anyway, I've been, I've been very, very disappointed in the mayor and the council, and I'm hoping this year things will change. This is the council. I just find it unforgivable that gave three million dollars to Lackawanna College, which you probably know. Forty-six thousand dollars for another bar on Capous Avenue for a bartender and a dishwasher. Money is just thrown away. I said it a month ago. A dozen people downtown, property owners right around the mall owe almost three hundred thousand dollars, and nothing has ever been done to collect a penny. Nothing. Some of them brag about it to others. And Capous Avenue, the crown jewel of the city, I mean Cedar Avenue, the same thing. As short as that street is, twenty property owners owe two hundred and thirty thousand dollars last year, and this isn't, this is going back years and years. This is senseless. Throwing away all this money in downtown. Downtown is a dinosaur. The future, the present, is Commerce Boulevard in montage. Downtown needs to go on and find, there's empty apartments. It's full of empty apartments and empty stores. And what happens? People keep wanting more apartments and more apartments. There's no parking. There'll be less parking with the mall. Everything is just being mismanaged with our money. It's, the city can't just keep subsidizing downtown because you gentlemen and the mayor think that's our future. That's our past. What was good then isn't necessarily good now, and that's downtown. Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at your last meeting just for downtown. It said so in the paperwork. Not for the city, not for swimming pools or fixing fire stations, but for downtown. I bet if that property on Wyoming was a swimming pool, it'd get all the attention in the world twenty-four, seven, probably be heated and everything if it was downtown. But the rest of the city, pools, children, it doesn't matter. I walk up with my puppy to Western Park, that beautiful pool just sitting there going to waste. All over the city, it's like that. Just mismanaged.
Thank you, Mr. Elman.
Well, this is winter. There will be a spring. I hope there's a spring for the city. I hope, I hope you do a good job for the people. Make them proud of you. They voted for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Glenis Johns. Happy New Year. City resident. So as we all know, we're in two thousand and eighteen, which gives us two more years before the twenty twenty census, which I believe is incredibly important to the city since we lack a lot of funding, and there is upwards of four hundred billion dollars of federal money that is allocated based on census records. So I'm really interested and curious about what the city is doing. City council and the mayor prepare for the twenty twenty census, if there's a council or a committee for the twenty twenty census, because I think it's really important that we start preparing ourselves now because those questions on the census impact education. For example, there's the Elementary and Secondary Education Act that is directly impacted by the census records, and we all know the catastrophe of the school district. So if we prepare ourselves for the census, I really do think it can give us more money and more visibility on the things that we do need to improve that is not necessarily being taken care of by school administrators. It directly impacts citizens. It reallocates housing districts, just a lot of things. Hospitals, schools, senior centers, service, emergency programs, all of those are impacted by the census. And all of those get funding based on the way that we prepare, the way that residents respond to the census, and I think it's incredibly important. So my main question is, is there a committee that is in charge of it that's preparing? Because I would like to get in contact with them. And also, like I said before, is city council or the mayor doing anything in particular to prepare to help us gain some funding back that we all know is important to the city? And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention. I attended a Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, and I heard some disturbing reports, which led me to believe, and a friend reminded me, that what is worse than a sore loser is a sore winner. And it sounded as if the Department of Licensing, Inspections and Permits, post-election, was taking things out on contractors. I can't tell you whether it's right or wrong, but it did pique my interest to make a decision that maybe I should not stay at Music Lake after the election. With that said, I'd like to deal with a couple of things, most of which are in the article that Chris Kelly wrote on Sunday. I noticed that he dealt with the Act five eleven, that he dealt with the trash fee. Well, the trash fee, there was an article in the paper that mentioned how much the city had over-collected. Well, at one time, I would have thought that that was the amount, but since now, I am more interested than frankly. I think those numbers are low by at least a million dollars each year, and on a cost-finding basis, that I believe I can demonstrate it. So I will offer my services to the individuals who have brought the litigation. I noticed that the Act five eleven and the trash fee issues are both before Judge Gibbons. I will tell you that AUSA Gibbons, when he was with the Department of Justice, I knew him, and I had great respect for his work. While I'd never had a matter in front of him, people I know and respect out of the Middle and the Eastern District of Pennsylvania told me that they thought he was a very bright AUSA and did a good job. After he left the U.S. Attorney's Office, attorney Gibbons, by all reports, I continue to hear that he did a really good job in his law practice, that he was a bright lawyer. From what I hear now, Judge Gibbons, from other people that are on the bench, tell me that they believe that he is really doing a great job. And I say that in the context that what we have is a judge that has ruled against the city on the Act five eleven. The appeal was denied by the Commonwealth. He certified the class action for the trash fee. The city solicitors comment was, "They disagree. Money is money." Well, based upon Judge Gibbons' background and the respect that he has within the legal community, maybe the city is talking to the wrong lawyers. And they may well find, if they talk to somebody else, they may get a completely different answer. But either one of those issues, they will tank the city. You want to go bankrupt, you'll go into receivership. You go into receivership, you and the mayor will lose all authority over the city. My opinion. I looked at the article, and Chris mentioned the sewer authority. Well, frankly, I found the article didn't go far enough. I've spoken to you. I've provided literature. I've sent letters, and other people have discussed the sewer authority with you. I don't believe you've done an awful lot, nor do I believe that you will in the future. I do not believe the mayor will address the issue. So with that said, who should deal with it? I do not believe the current District Attorney's Office has the resources to deal with this issue. I believe that the Attorney General's Office may not have an interest in this issue. So with that said, I believe this matter should be resolved and resolved on a local basis. So you want to get in front of it before somebody else does. I believe the matter should be referred to the Middle District of Pennsylvania, the United States Department of Justice, and the FBI. In the past, I only wanted to deal with civil issues. Well, I no longer want to deal with civil issues, and I don't mean in the social sense because there are other issues that need to be dealt with that I believe are pretty significant that will impact an awful lot of individuals personally. A fine woman in the audience, a couple of weeks ago, at a meeting, I was not there for the purpose of the meeting. I was there for one purpose, to interview people. My work, my field work, has been completed. I would already engage by somebody else, and my field work was completed today. I believe that matter will have some traction. So with that said, gentlemen, have a good New Year. I hope to see you again when I return from Florida. And with that, I need to go home and have dinner with my wife.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who cares to address council?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lynn Labraski. I reside at twelve eighteen Rock Street in West Scranton with my husband, who's here tonight, Javri Labraski. I come before the council tonight with a complaint regarding Portanova's Body Shop. It's a commercial business property that's located at eleven fifty-three Luzern Street, also in West Scranton. My husband and I purchased a home in June of two thousand and twelve with the knowledge that there was a body shop located in the rear of our residence. Not a plowing and rock salt business. For several years, we've made numerous attempts to resolve some issues that we have regarding this business, including speaking directly to the owner of the property, contacting the owner of the residential property where the owner of this business parks his vehicles. We also notified the zoning officer, Jack Sweeney, who's the zoning for West Side. My husband has been down to City Hall in person, and he's even directly spoken to Mayor Court Ray. Nothing's been done. Recently, we've involved the Scranton Police Department. The police did not respond to our first complaint. They did respond to our second complaint. However, the responding officer did not want to do a police report. They did, but they were very reluctant in wanting to do one. My complaints today are in regards to Mr. Portanova's plow trucks, which have attached salt hoppers, spreaders, however you want to refer to those. Aside from his business property, he parks his vehicles on a residential lot located in the twelve hundred block of Oliver Place, belonging to a separate owner, which is located in the rear of our residence. He also parks them on a residential lot adjacent to his business. And additionally, he parks them out on Luzern Street, blocking pedestrian sidewalks. We have a fence behind our property where he parks these trucks. Again, it's a residential property. These are commercial vehicles. On several occasions, he's damaged our fence, recently resulting in a claim on our homeowner's insurance. As far as the rock salt, he stores rock salt in and on his commercial plow vehicles, and he also stores it in a trailer located on a residential lot alongside of his business property. He receives rock salt deliveries during the winter season. When deliveries are being made to the rear of the business property, which is Oliver Place, the delivery truck obstructs the entire alley, which makes it impossible for an emergency vehicle to maintain access. Additionally, the truck dumps a triaxle load of salt in the center of the alley, further obstructing access. There's a sewer drain located near where Mr. Portanova has his rock salt delivered, and after loading the salt into a storage shed, any remaining salt gets rinsed into the sewer drain located nearby, and also the salt has killed our grass and vegetation along the property line where the trucks are being parked. Regarding noise, referring to all the above, the noise that the salt delivery trucks make, or the delivery truck makes when dumping the salt, it's, our house shakes. That's how loud it is. He operates multiple commercial vehicles around the clock when the forecast calls for weather requiring his plowing and salt services, and the trucks are very noisy, along with the truck operators yelling loudly to one another over the noise of the vehicles. This goes on at all hours of the day and night and has been ruining our quality of life and any right to quiet enjoyment. As far as safety is concerned, there's multiple safety issues regarding the business, and I'll just name a few. He has heavy equipment on top of the salt shed that's not tied down or secured in any way. The plows are being stored on and off the vehicles all year round. The salt spreaders, hoppers are left open at times, not only causing salt to contaminate the ground, but also posing a risk to a child gaining access and possibly becoming trapped, injured, or even killed. The trucks emit exhaust fumes year round, and many are running directly behind our backyard. So upon advice from our attorney, Paul Kelly, we were advised to bring this issue before the council for remediation. And in closing, I would just like to add that this business, to the best of my knowledge, is a body shop, and it should not be operating as a plowing and rock salt business. I do have photos, if you'd like to look at them.
Sure.
And thank you.
Can you, if I could ask you a question, and if you can go back to the podium. How long has it been operating beyond the body shop? I mean, with all this rock salt and plowing and?
I would say probably since two thousand and thirteen.
Okay, so at least four or five years.
And we purchased our home in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, so right after you purchased your home.
Mm-hmm.
But when you first bought your house, it was purely a auto body repair shop?
And it's still labeled that way.
Yeah.
Portanova Body Shop.
Right. But obviously, the second part of the business has been active for the last four or five years, this whole plowing and salt storage and everything else, okay?
And I don't know if, you know, if that's part of the business, or if he's running a business out of a business. I don't know what kind of mercantile tax, I don't. That's what I'm asking you guys to help out with. Because I can't seem to get any answers. Nobody, please. Nobody, the police, the zoning, nobody seems to know what's okay and what's not okay. What I know is that my husband did speak to the mayor. He just happened to bump into him when he was getting off the elevator. The only people that knew about my husband bumping into the mayor were my husband and I, and the mayor. And somehow, when the police were called, and the owner of this business was there at the time, which was just last week, he mentioned to my husband that he knew he spoke to the mayor. So, that concerns me, because...
Yes.
I don't know who's... He said he almost punched him in the face, or something along those lines, which I'm sure that would have made the news, but... So, that was a false statement. But how did he know that my husband even confronted the mayor?
Some of the noise problems, are they happening early in the...
It's the 24th, around the clock.
Because there's a noise ordinance in effect from 10 o'clock at night till 7 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
And so, it's a violation of that as well?
Yeah, 11, 12 in the morning, 1, 2, 3 a.m., 4 a.m., whenever the weather calls for it. I also have just things I printed out from the Assessor website, showing his property and our property, and it's the backs of our properties that are separated by an alley. Behind our backyard, there is a three-story apartment building that's being rented out. Next to that apartment building, there's an empty lot, I guess, which is designated for the residents. However, he parks, and you can see in the photos, his trucks there, and that's residential. Now, the only progress I made with Mr. Sweeney was getting him over the summer to remove the plows from the trucks and the hoppers, because they exceeded the weight limit. I guess without them, they're not considered commercial, but they're back on, and they're back being parked there.
Well, yeah, once the winter starts, they're in full operation, so that doesn't really make any sense at this point.
And I didn't mention it, but like, when he starts the trucks in the summer and in the winter, rodents get in there. We always end up with mice in our house. So, there's a lot more, but I just wanted to... I know I have five minutes, so...
Well, we'll start making our phone calls, and hopefully, we'll get some answers for you.
So, I'm just hoping to get some remediation. This has been going on for four years now, and he just basically tells us to go, you know, explicit ourselves.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate you telling your story. Hopefully, we can get something done for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident. Okay, I wrote this last year, in 2017, because I had a brainstorm here. How about an ordinance banning recycling bins and barrels to be used for trash? It's way past time. I see through the courts, many, many houses, they get their recycling barrel, they don't do anything with it, except pile trash in it. And probably a lot of recycling that gets hauled away as trash. Once again, on trash, years back, that was done to us, with what the gentleman here They sent it to my old address, which was 1617 Pine Street. For two years, I never got a bill, and I finally got over to NCC. I called downtown, they couldn't give me an answer. So, I went over to NCC, and $356 or something like that turned into $575. And they kind of treated it... I was in there before, and they kind of obviously had me on computer to pay on the property I had bought, and they obviously didn't. So, you know, the second year, I was kind of tired of trying to get an answer out of City Hall at the time. Different mayor, different counsel, granted, but why don't we send the bill to the affected address? Instead of sending it, that way, if there's a tenant in there to the attention of the occupant, or owner, or landlord, and that type of thing would be solved. Now, I would advise anybody that doesn't get a trash bill, get down there and straighten it out. And by the way, it took me three years after 2004 to get a letter in the mail on my trash bill. It went on, crumpled on the ropes, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, I went back to the same person that took it the year before. They said, "Who did this?" "You did." You know, so let's get it straightened out. And ever since I haven't been, I've gotten my trash bill every year, and I even got the bust Dwayne last year. I want my deluxe senior citizen discount, 30 bucks here, I'm early, you know, so... And, once again, on pilots, please, the CFC, colleges, or tax exempt, pilots only pay a small amount, token of taxes that would be owed, if they're taxable. It's no gift if you bring somebody into town, considering all the lawsuits and so forth that are going on right now. I hope for the city that we don't wind up having serious problems here, but, because I certainly don't want to get stuck paying more tax for a 35% tax exempt. And as far as the advice that was given years back, the free advice, or it was paid for by the college and the Chamber of Commerce, well, it hasn't worked out, gang. And all of these things should have been considered before, before any actions were taken. And like I said, I'm hoping for the city, because I live here, I'm committed to living here, I don't have anywhere else to go, and I'm not going to run up to the country. A car costs $25,000, $30,000, and in five years, if you live in the country, it's $35,000 worth of junk. So, think about it. Transportation is very expensive, and the more you drive, the more likely it's going to be junk all the sooner, so... I know, I lived for years, I fixed cars up that I bought off of front lines and drove them 100,000 miles, but I was mechanic at a dealership, so, and I don't have that capacity anymore. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start off tonight by assuming, I guess, that you people have been doing a lot of what I've been doing too, which is filing and catching up. You gave yourself the two weeks off before, or three weeks off after the budget was done, so, other than getting ready for the holidays, I'm not sure what you've been doing, but I started to go through some old things, as I say, doing filing. And back last year, in July, you all hired or approved the mayor's hiring of environment, excuse me, exceptional payments on tracking down unregistered units. What progress have they made?
I asked the business administrator, former business administrator, Mr. Bolzoni, this question, because I wanted an update.
My time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a memorandum of, a memo from him that I can share with you.
Okay.
Before he left.
Okay, because I start looking. I went through the controllers' reports, which prompted a lot of other questions, and I didn't see any payments to them, so I wonder if they're even working with, for us. So, that would be interesting. Also, I found a payment of $265,176 from the, out of the fire department to Mar Paul Construction Company last year. It was my understanding that you all had, or the administration had decided to forego the fire improvements of the fire units till this year? What did, what did Mar Paul Construction do for the fire department last year?
I'm not sure what they were... They were acting as a general contractor, so they weren't engaged at that point. The work hasn't started yet.
That's what my understanding was, that why would we pay them $275,000 or $65,000?
I don't know, we'll have to check into that and see what that was for.
I would appreciate that. Then, of course, I got into that, and I got a little, a few more things. So, I went to the 2018, to the business administrator's website, and I thought I would find the 2018 budget there, since there were very few changes to it, and it's not there yet. Why?
I don't know.
Maybe somebody could find out. And you, probably you all have copies. I, in going through that, I was sort of astounded that we're paying workers' compensation in 2016, that was, 2016, excuse me, 2016, of $3 million. And I wondered what it was, which is what prompted me to try to get to the budget, and only to find that it is not on the website. So, can you tell me how many persons are on workers' compensation, and what percentage of our...
Well, not a fan, but we can find out.
Okay. Okay, and then I submitted, as you all had demanded last year, our questions on the budget in writing. Can you tell me when I will get answers to those questions?
As far as I know, all the questions went to the appropriate department heads, and we haven't gotten responses. So, we can check.
Could I, when can I get what have been responded to?
Well, we'll find out, but I'm not sure if they responded at all.
Okay. And then, curiously, tonight, oh, next week's a holiday. Well, a lot of Mondays are on, have holidays, which makes me suspicious, and maybe that's why you chose Monday. But there are four other days in the week that you could meet. Just because one day is not available, because it's a legal holiday, does not say you can't meet on another day that week. I'm giving up a lot. I think I have to give up my Bible study class to attend these meetings. And then, you know, next thing, you people don't obviously consider meeting a necessity. We have all these lawsuits, potentials. I would think you'd be working on drawing up some alternatives. If the mayor doesn't want to do it, that's fine. If the business administrator doesn't want to do it. But as our elected representatives, I think you should be thinking of what you would be doing. And that prompts another question on the, and also, scheduling it on the same night as the school board meets. Not, not too good. We have two main things in the city, and both of which are in pretty much trouble, and you have to choose, flip the coin. I'll bring the rest back next week? No, I won't. I'll have to bring it back in two weeks, because you'll be too busy next week to meet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel?
Fifth order, 5A motion.
Mr. Perry, any motions or comments?
Yeah, a few comments. We, the business administrator got in touch with our office. Ms. Jeffries, you'll be happy, he agrees with, with the idea of using cell tower lease funds to help infuse our, our much-needed street sign project. So, that's something that will be going forward in the near future. We don't have the nitty-gritty on it yet, on, on how we're going to do it, but, you know, just spitballing it with fellow councilmen, it feels like the best course of action would be go to the areas of the city that actually need the most, and use the money as we get it from those funds to replace everything. So, funding's always the most difficult thing. So, it seems like at least we do have some infusion of funds to get that project off the ground and running, and then we just have to keep it going. It seems like it's now it's getting down to the manpower plan and how we're going to implement it. So, very happy with that. Also, I, there will be, I believe, Mr. Rogan, and I forgot to bring this up in caucus, you're going to be meeting with the business administrator on refuge. If you could include in your meeting about credit card payments?
Absolutely.
I know that a former BA, Mr. Bolzoni, said that's something that the city felt necessary to move forward to, to just to help increase revenue, and he was going to bring that back. It was just, I guess it was such an antiquated system we had to, to get funds that City Hall on a credit card payment plan, it was just, it was going to be difficult to do. But we're a year into it now, and that'd be something I think would be beneficial for the city. I want to thank, on motions in a B, fifth order, is, I just want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Burns. They donated $1,000 to the Scranton Fire Department. Those of you not familiar, their son, Colin, was in a, went missing for several hours, and was found by the Scranton Police Department after, after a search up Montage Mountain. It was a very grave situation. He was found, he's safe, and just to give their thanks and gratitude, which is absolutely not necessary, they, the family did donate $1,000 to the fire department. We had a letter, we have a letter from Chief Pat DiSarno, and he intends to use that money for much-needed equipment that the fire department needs. Finally, oh, a census was brought up. There's a question on the census. The census, I do believe there's a good, and it, there's a, there's a good opportunity for a really properly accounted-for census to really help the city, especially a city like Scranton. And 2020 is going to be an important year. The Census Bureau plans, they're probably already in the final stages of getting everything where they need. You can contact the Census Bureau at census.gov. Our regional office for this area that takes care of all Pennsylvania and most of the Northeast is in Philadelphia. And you can contact their office off of that census.gov page, and they, they're doing hiring, they're always looking for volunteers, so it's, and if there was a subcommittee formed by the city to help the Census Bureau, I'm all for that. Because anything that we can do to help move that along, to get more accurately accounted for, for biggest funds, count me in. Finally, with that one question about, about the zoning, the zoning complaints, can we just make a contact, Mr. Sweeney, just to give the council an update on the visit that he had there, and see if there's any zoning infractions that were happening, what he found, just so we can all get on the same page? If he gives us a call, that can be, his response can be put in an email, or if it's a letter, just make sure we're all copied on that. And that way, we're, we're on the loop, and we can kind of get on the same page, and see where we're at with it, and then, and we can go from there. Do you guys need these pictures back?
No, you don't.
Okay, well, I'll keep them in, in our clerk's office. That way, if we need to refer to them again, I will keep them there. And that's, that's all I have today, Mr. Rogan.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments?
The only comment I have at this time, Mrs. Reed, would you be able to get me a copy of the Riley Engineering Report on the Youngs' property, so I could review that, please? And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, do you have any motions or comments?
Thank you. First of all, I am very sorry to see the Youngs here again. I'm embarrassed, I'm ashamed that it's taken this long, that we're almost back to where we started from. There's no reason in the world that we can't have that meeting that you're requesting, and have that meeting soon. So, all of us are in concurrence with that. We're going to do everything we can to make that happen. I think if reasonable people get together, we'll come to a reasonable solution, and we'll move on with this project and get it done for you. So, again, I'm sorry that you have to be here again, after 18 months of, of all you've done to try to get this to a conclusion, but hopefully, we're almost there. So, I promise I will do my best to get that meeting as soon as we can, and I'll let you know if I, if I hear anything at all between now and next week. All right. Earlier this evening, Council President Rogan signed a proxy that he appointed me as designee to the Board that oversees the NDC and ABM parking assets. Of course, that's something I've been very interested in since the agreement between the city and NDC was forged. I've appeared at Scranton Parking Authority meetings to discuss this issue, my concerns, and offer suggestions on downtown parking. I met with principals of NDC and ABM on numerous occasions, and I have strong opinions on the current rates within the parking garages, as well as expanding and creating a better system for on-street parking in the downtown and other areas under NDC's purview. The walkability, the vitality, and the growth of our downtown are very much linked with the progressive parking program, one that works and allows for a positive experience, parking on-street as well as in the garages. I am not only a city councilman, I'm a downtown resident, in one of those apartments that are vacant. By the way, to my knowledge, there's a waiting list in almost every single building downtown for apartments, just to make that point. But again, I'm a downtown resident, and I'm also a parking garage customer. So, my perspective is not only unique, but it's also relevant. After a slow start, I've seen progress being made by NDC and ABM in the recent months, but the dialogue and the conversation have to continue, and it will. I would like to formally request, if my colleagues concur, that we ask ABM representatives and NDC representatives to come to a work session to discuss what they've done so far up to date, and what their plans are for the future for the garages, as well as on-street parking. So, if that's okay, we'll... So if that's okay, we'll send a letter out. I know Councilwoman Wexler was initiating that, but I, I'll take it another step further and I'll contact them.
If we could have Solicitor Johns as well, from the Parking Authority.
Sure, absolutely, not a problem. On another issue, so let me remember my numerous comments quite a few years ago about a NIS, which is a neighborhood improvement zone, which was, which has completely turned around the Allentown Business District. To date, because of the designation, designation, over $2 billion has been invested, invested or will be invested in the designated areas of downtown Allentown and the Lehigh River Corridor. Another version of that is known as a CRIS, a City Revitalization and Improvement Zone. And Bethlehem has that designation as well, so two cities in the Lehigh Valley have that same designation. Because of the CRIS designation, completion is nearing on a six-story building, a mixed-use building in downtown Bethlehem, called the Gateway at Greenway Park. It's a $20 million project, 127,000 square feet, and it would not have happened without that CRIS designation. As a reminder, Allentown is, is one city, the only city that has a NIS. Bethlehem and Lancaster currently have the CRIS designations. The CRIS was established to spur new growth in cities that have struggled to attract development, helping to revive downtowns and create jobs for the residents of that area. A CRIS is an area of up to 130 acres comprised of parcels designated by an authority to capture state and local taxes for the purpose of improvement and development within that zone. Similar to a tax incremental financing or TIF program, it is structured to protect the existing state and local tax base while providing incremental funding for tax revenues based on a new growth generated over and above an established business baseline and new revenue generated in the zone by new businesses. The CRIS allows certain state and local taxes generated by the business in the zone to be used to repay debt service, thereby spurring economic development projects into that zone. So where do we stand on the CRIS? Well, I've been talking about this for about three years. As we exit Act 47, any success that will be achieved post Act 47 will be through growth, not maintaining the status quo. So it's important that, more than ever, that we begin to put into place those initiatives that will guarantee and promote that growth. So it's my understanding that much of the decision-making on this issue lies squarely in the governor's office. So I would like to send a letter to the governor asking that he consider supporting a CRIS designation for the city of Scranton. If everyone occurs, I would really like to discuss it, I'd be glad to, but that's something I think is very, very important. The governor has, I'm not sure if it's because of the economic climate in Pennsylvania right now, but he's been slow to expand the CRIS program, but again, we are the poster child for something like this as we exit Act 47. So I'm hoping that he takes a good hard look at this and we can have a dialogue and a conversation, because I think it's that important for the city of Scranton as we enter, again, that time that we're going to be exiting Act 47. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Gohn, any, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to say that I disagree with not having a meeting next week and canceling it because of Martin Luther King Day, and I brought this up in the caucus, you know, I think we should reschedule that meeting. There's a lot of holidays that fall on Mondays, and as Mrs. Schumacher correctly pointed out, there's a lot of important issues to discuss, even if there's nothing on the agenda. I mean, we're getting sued by everybody and their brother, so I don't think that we should take meetings off because of holidays. You know, we take a few weeks off in August and I think that's enough. Second thing, I just want to remind everyone that the DPW will be picking Christmas trees up today through the end of the month, and they would ask that you do not put the Christmas trees in bags. I also wanted to point out, just before Christmas, in a December 16th article, I was kind of just astounded by it, the Scranton Sewer Authority is paying nearly $40,000 to a De Naples Trucking Firm for a bulldozer the agency rented last year but failed to return. The authority, which had no written contract for the rental, it was done by way of verbal agreement, did not transfer the bulldozer rental agreement with NNL Transportation of Dunmore to the buyer of the sewer system, Pennsylvania American Water, in the December 29th closing of the sewer sale, said Authority Executive Director and Solicitor Jason Shrive. You know, I have a, there's a few issues with this. I request it from Mr. Shrive, how many other verbal agreements are there currently and in the past? How many handshake agreements, pat-on-the-back agreements are there for $40,000? And if a bulldozer could slip through the cracks, what else could slip through the cracks? You know, this is why months ago, I sat up here and I was yelling at the top of my lungs in this room and in the room over there where they have the Sewer Authority meetings to bring the Auditor General in to audit the sale of the Sewer Authority. Lo and behold, a few months later, a bulldozer, a big bulldozer somehow falls through the cracks, and guess what? There's another verbal agreement. We saw $200,000, actually $400,000 verbal agreement with Ned Abrahamson. Now we see a $40,000 verbal agreement for a bulldozer with NNL Transportation. So I'd like to know from Mr. Shrive, what other verbal agreements are there? And I'd like to know that immediately. And I also asked, I've been asking for a number of items. I asked, were RFPs issued for all of the mandated work performed by the Sewer Authority between December 2015 and December 2016? And I've been asking for a list of the companies that perform the mandated work assigned by the authority. I've asked for this November 1st, September 15th, and I have yet to receive any of that information. So we did submit another request. In the caucus I brought up, I'd like to ask the Attorney General for an update on the review or investigation, whatever you want to call it, into the sale of the Sewer Authority. A number of months ago, he had written Attorney General Josh Shapiro a letter to the editor in which he said that he was, you know, reviewing it, his office was taking a look at it, investigating it. It's been a few months now, so I'd like to know, was there a timeline? What's going on with that? Also, it's, it's been brought up here the past few months in, at tonight's meeting, but I am extremely concerned over the very real possibility that the city may lose one, if not more, of the lawsuits that have been brought against it. And if that happens, that will all but torpedo the chances of the city exiting Act 47 and send us over a fiscal cliff. Act 511, where the Commonwealth Court just rejected the city's appeal, the trash lawsuit, which was just certified as class action, the Scranton Sewer Authority, where the legality of the whole entire deal has been called into question, and, I'm not an attorney, but the state law seems to be very clear on the issue. Problem is, we've already spent almost all of the proceeds and rental registration. So, apparently, we're having an executive session next week with the city solicitor, and I'm going to be interested to see what the, the mayor, the mayor and his administration's Plan B is on this. My other concern is that we're going, or we already have, we're in the process of depositing millions of dollars into the pension funds while we're still engaged in lawsuits by the police union, which could have devastating effects on the fund's viability if we should lose these cases. And I want to remind everybody what these cases involve. The first one is a class-action lawsuit brought in 2006 by retired police officers who are seeking recovery of longevity increases to which they contend they were entitled to in addition to their pension payments. If the plaintiffs are successful, there will be a material impact on the pension funds for police and firefighters. The city believes, is confident that it will prevail on the merits with respect to this litigation. However, given the size of the class involved and the number of years in question, in the event the litigation is decided in a manner adverse to the city, the impact on the pension funds for police and firefighters would be material. So that's number one. Number two, the Fraternal Order of Police has filed a grievance regarding the retirement age required under the police pension fund. The FOP is taking the position that there is no age requirement as a result. If the FOP's position is sustained, the actuarial calculation will require a substantial increase in the city's annual pension contribution for the police fund. The grievance has been heard by an arbiter and the city and the FOP are awaiting the arbitration decision. If the matter is decided in a manner adverse to the city, the impact on the police pension fund could be material. So even on top of the other lawsuits that I just mentioned, if we lose one of these and we don't have the best success in court, in arbitration, we're throwing all this money into the pension fund and these two lawsuits could take us right back where we started. So the mayor has said to rely on the lawyers, I've said this before, that's one of the scariest statements I've ever heard since I've been on council. We should be having serious conversations about this and what we are going to do in the very likely event we come out on the bottom of one of these suits. The answer cannot be to go back to the taxpayers again and ask them for a bailout. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one brief comment following up on what Councilman Evans mentioned. Past Council President Joe Wexler did serve on the advisory board for the Parking Authority, and Councilman Evans did reach out to me a few weeks ago expressing interest to serve as my proxy for that position. And as a resident of the downtown and a member and a patron of the garages, Councilman Evans does have a little more perspective on the condition of the garages than anyone sitting on this board, so I look forward to working with him in, in that respect and, you know, I think we'll, we'll work very well on that. So I just want to, just to follow up on that item. As was mentioned, we are having a meeting, a very large meeting on Friday regarding garbage fee billing and rental registration issues, so there's, I'm going to have a lot more to say on that at next week's meeting, and I do appreciate the suggestion, Councilman Perry, regarding the credit card billing. The city is behind the times when it comes to electronic payments, that's definitely something that we need to get caught up on. That is it for tonight, thank you.
5B for introduction of resolution, accepting a $1,000 donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Burns, presented to the City of Scranton Fire Department in appreciation for the rescue of their son.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Brian Fallon, 719 River Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania 1A 505, to the position of Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, effective January 1, 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question?
Yes, on the question, I just want to wish Mr. Fallon the best of luck in his new position, and in dealing with him over the last four years, he's been nothing but professional and I think will continue to do a great job for the city.
On the question, I would agree with that. I've known Brian forever, since he was born probably, and the entire Fallon family, they're, they're great people, Joanne and Jack as parents. I've seen Brian do a great job so far. I think this is a wise move to create, to put this position back into the budget and he's the right person for it, so we're looking forward to some real positive results in our park system.
Yes, on the question, I agree with both, both councilmen on that. I spoke to Mr. Fallon this week and he is excited to get to work and this really will free up his time to dedicate it on all the needs that the parks have, which are plenty up, including taking care of our treehouse that, that is in need of repair. So he's up for the challenge and definitely the best person for the job.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.